Good afternoon, everyone. Happy to see all of you here. Let us bow our heads, please, and a word of prayer. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for all the things that you've done for us. Lord, we thank you for our city. We ask you to keep your arms and love around our city and help us, Lord, as we guide and lead the city. And we thank you for all the citizens that are here and all the citizens that are out and listening. Bless them, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Item number one, consideration of May 7th, 2024, City Council minutes.
Move for the adoption of the minutes?
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit, second by Councilman Strowman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. We have an appearance tonight from Ms. Kathy Booker from MUSC Health, Orangeburg Partnership for D Y B. And Counsel, she will be providing us with information tonight regarding the medical aspect of D Y B. Thank you, Ms. Booker. Would you come and state your name and your address, please, ma'am?
Kathy Booker, MUSC Health in Orangeburg.
Yeah.
Sufficious?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. Mayor, City Council, it's an honor to be here. Our City Administrator, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to come this evening. I want to share with you, last year on July 25th, two days before my birthday, I sat with many of you out at the ballpark when you announced that D Y B was coming to Orangeburg. And I immediately went back to the hospital and said, I don't know what we're going to do or what we have to do, but we're going to be the official healthcare provider for that event. And I am happy to say that MUSC, the system, not just here in Orangeburg, has exuberantly adopted that initiative. And we will be the official healthcare provider for the entire event during the D Y B. We were excited. It's gone all the way through the system to our CEO, and we are elated to be there. A part of us doing that is what I see, building the trust of the community and building partnerships within our city. Many of you I've seen over the years, I've known you, worked with you. And I think by having a new healthcare provider in Orangeburg, that it is our duty to our community and our citizens to be a part. So, I wanted to come and share my little bit, but I'm bringing the two people who are going to be supporting this entire event. We have Mr. Charles Reeves, who is the Director of our EMS Services, and Brittany Miller, who is over our Athletic Training Program. And they're just going to tell you just a little bit of what services we're going to be providing for the entire event.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, good evening. As Ms. Kathy said, I am Brittany Miller. I am the Sports Medicine Coordinator for MUSC Health. So I am over all the athletic trainers. The biggest thing is that MUSC signed a contract and partnered with Orangeburg County School Districts so that we can put athletic trainers in each one of our schools. So that has been my main priority until now with the World Series. So we are very excited about that. So one of the things that we will have is we will have a full certified athletic training staff able to be present at all the games right there to take care of our athletes for anything that goes down from a simple knee scrape to an ankle tape to a concussion or heat illness. So we will have, like I said, a full certified athletic training staff there. As well as we will also have some student volunteers from our Orangeburg County Schools as well and some past alum to be there as hands, extra hands to assist with everything as well. So we're very excited and looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Charles Reeves, I'm the Director of Nursing Operations, Trauma EMS, and anything else that they've been doing in the building. I'm kind of coordinating the medical response for the baseball tournament. And I would tell you that I'm confident and sure that we will have good medical coverage out there. I plan on having a staff of six nurses from the emergency department out there in conjunction with support of athletic trainers. I've also partnered with the county. So Orangeburg County EMS, as well as Emergency Management, are going to allocate resources to allow us because obviously it's going to be a hot time of year. So we want to make sure that we can cool patients, take care of patients. We'll have two dedicated ambulances, ALS staff from MUSC that will be there for the entire event. That will be staff with paramedics. And we've also coordinated with our air assets if we need them as to what we need to do if we need to fly somebody out from that site and whatnot. So you have nothing to worry about clinically or medically during the event. I got you covered.
All right. We want to just, before y'all sit down, we want to just thank y'all so much.
You are quite welcome.
For the partnership and for taking the worries off of us. Because we certainly want to have a good time. We don't want nobody to get sick and pass out, you know. But thank y'all so much, Ms. Booker, we appreciate you.
You're quite welcome. And that's coverage for the athletes and spectators. So it's everyone in attendance that we will be there to provide. So thank you again for the opportunity, and we look forward to it.
Counsel, do y'all have any questions or comments? This is just amazing.
I'm just want to thank you because partnering is so good for everyone. So that's great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And we look forward, we don't see you before then, we'll see you in July.
All right. Thank you. That is so great. Our third item, we have a presentation from W K Dickerson and Company, Inc., Airport Updates. And we want to, want them to come, want Ms. Singh to come and bring us up.
I'm going to be quick. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I am pleased to come before you. We have a presentation that'll be five minutes or hopefully a little less. The reason I say that like that is we have one of our Airport Commissioners present today. But we presented, W K Dixon presented the plan that we're going to be talking about with you today. And it took us about an hour. And the first challenge that I gave the folks with W K Dixon was, folks, we don't have an hour with Counsel. So with that said, we will have them present. But I do want to say one thing and point out, we have Betty Baker with us, who is our Airport Manager. You surround yourself with good people. And that's what I have with our Airport Manager and our staff out there. I attended the Aviation Conference this year, and I can tell you that Betty absolutely knew everybody. Everybody knew Betty. The FAA was very comfortable with Betty and with our consultants. And couldn't ask for more than we have. We have a little Army operation going on right now that we're very grateful to have in Orangeburg. And once again, Betty has just outperformed. We have one of the friendliest airports around, and I'm so grateful for that. But with no further ado on that, let me introduce our folks with W K Dixon, then I'm going to get out of the way. We have Joe Barkovich, who will be presenting tonight. Chris Burkheimer with W K Dixon. And Bree, I'm drawing, Barano, I'm drawing a blank, and I knew it, and I just lost it. So, but I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, John, and Mr. Mayor, and members of Counsel. Glad to be here again. If you recall, we were here last March, kind of did a similar presentation, talked about a few projects that were going on at the time, and then upcoming projects in the culmination of the C I P. You had a package in there with some information about each one of those projects that were ongoing, as well as the C I P here, their capital improvement plan, five years with one. It's actually got six years because the next closest year that the FAA funds is on there for reference at the top, starting with fiscal year '24. So I just want to step through that, it's on the monitors and also in your packet. But the projects that are listed in there that we kind of are focused on in a strategic plan that we formulated with a terminal area plan most recently, have outlined what you're going to have coming up next. We're in the process of designing a rehabilitation for your primary runway. You've got two runways, and the FAA looks to fund this at 90% and the state kicking in 5%. So it's only 5% locally. That's at the top of the list. We also want to do an airport layout plan, which is a master plan that looks at 20 years of development, kind of figures it all out for you and finds, fine tunes things. As we step through, one of the things you'll notice in there, and there's a lot of stuff that's going on in the C I P, but there's different funding sources and different line items in there. The important thing is that we're really fortunate as a National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, recognized airport, that you get 90% funding for most of your projects from the FAA and 5% from the state, leaving 5% locally. You can also work with the state and get projects that range from 60% from them and 40% for you all the way up to 90 and 10. It just depends, and that depends on the projects. So one of the things that you'll notice in here is that you've got a lot of development that works towards not only enhancing your airfield, but also your terminal area. And that terminal area and your airfield work together to give you a lot of economic generation. You've got folks flying in, you've got the Golden Knights here this week. That's, you know, fuel, that's a lot of, a lot of activity that are going on, and people coming out there to see this community asset that you have. As you step through this, and I'm not going to go every line by line, but you see a couple of things that we highlighted in there are, there's hangar development down the road. Part of this terminal area plan is that we outlined a place where you can put the different types of hangars, from small hangars to big hangars. But we got to make sure that you have the infrastructure to get to them from both the airside and the land side, auto parking, that kind of stuff, as well as the aircraft being able to get to those hangars. And so that generates rent and things like that for you. A lot of times, that's hard to come by in funding. The FAA will only do that when you have everything else taken care of, and the state really can't help you out with it. So a lot of times, you have to find some local funding to get that done. And it's based on the market, you know, what type of development that you do. So you do generate, you know, revenue off of that, so that's always a good thing. The bottom line in all of this, when you get down to the bottom, is that you see you've got about $18 million of development that would occur over five years if everything were to come into full fruition for funding. But your local investment is only $2 million. And about half of that would be hangars that are only outlined, you know, to be funded locally. So there's a lot of different combinations of things that you can do. But the important part is to prove to the FAA that you are focused on your airport, constantly investing in it, and they return the favor with funding back to you. So that's kind of the synopsis. Any questions about that? I know there's a lot going on there in your packets and on this C I P, but we can answer some questions for you.
Are there any questions, Counsel, or any concerns? Oh, I just want to say, I'm glad to hear that we have a long-range plan that covers some areas that we have been concerned about. Building new hangars have been one of our concerns. And especially extending the runway. So in this plan, I'm glad to see that there's, you know, there's a way that we can get these done.
Yeah, it's an ongoing process. Like I mentioned, we had just completed or we're in the, putting the finishing touches on what we call the Terminal Area Plan. It focuses on just your terminal development, everything outside of the runway taxiway, you know, areas, hangars, buildings, parking, that kind of stuff. But that's going to platform into, you see on top of the list there, that we're hoping to get funding for you this year to do an airport layout plan, which is the long-range 20-year plan. It looks at the entire community involved with the airport, forecast the growth and all that kind of stuff, as well as runway extension and things like that. And then what happens, what comes out of this is this capital improvement plan that we fine tune every year. That is kind of the near-term plan. So you're constantly, there's constantly planning going on, so.
Do you see somewhere in the near future we'll be able to have commercial planes flying in and out of here?
I wouldn't see that in the near, in the near future. That's, you, there's a lot that has to go into that. But a lot of it is the air service need. The airlines would have to want to come in here and have enough volume going on, and then you bolster your infrastructure to match that. So it's not, and just to be realistic, it's not on the near-term horizon, but it doesn't, it's never out of the question. Any questions?
Any questions?
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Betty, we want to thank you for all you do back there. Thank you. All right, now, we have Ms. Everin, number five. Number four, I'm sorry, number four, update, yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening. Evening.
And all of our guests. 64 days. 64 days, five hours, 45 minutes, and 39 seconds, to be exact. That's how long we have until our Diamond Youth Baseball World Series is here. And we will be hosting tens of thousands of visitors from 11 states, their families, friends, and most importantly, our young people who love the sport of baseball. And so we have this opportunity to put the best of Orangeburg forward. And we certainly have been working diligently to accomplish just that. You heard from Ms. Booker and MUSC how they have stepped up in an extraordinary way to partner and make this event the best that it can be. I said from the very beginning that this was going to be a community-wide effort, not just a city of Orangeburg effort, but the entire community needed to come together and support this endeavor that we have. So we have, again, been working diligently to bring this, to put on the best event possible. I've told our staff from the very beginning, we want to go above and beyond what has been done in the past, and we want to set a new standard and a new bar. And so we have had extraordinary partnerships, like I said, MUSC, South Carolina State. I can go on and on in terms of some of the businesses, the chamber. The county is going to step forward, the state of South Carolina has stepped forward. So extraordinary, again. I'm going to ask Mr. Taylor to come and give you all a rundown of what has been, what we've been working on all this time behind the scenes. We've had the Festival of Roses now that is behind us, so it's full steam ahead, D Y B, all day, every day. And I just want to have him step forward and share a little with you about what we've been working on.
Thank you, Mr. Everin.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Counsel. As Mr. Everin has said, all roads lead to Orangeburg, 64 days, the countdown. And we're very excited, we're grateful for the partnership with MUSC. As we, you know, continue to plan, as you can tell, as you travel through the city, our marketing has gone up, we've got banners up everywhere. I say all roads lead to Orangeburg, but we have media and market stuff out on 26, 95, 77, throughout the city of Orangeburg so that we can get our community and citizens alike excited about this event coming in July. We have information in all of the welcome centers throughout the state of South Carolina. We've worked on our complex, and so we like to say, "Orangeburg Diamond shines the brightest" as you come to enjoy the games this summer. Our landscape design has been improved and updated. We've added shades to all our bleachers. We've improved with our safety by installing the Thor Guard. We're working diligently to get our waifinding signs up. So as you get in the complex, you'll be able to find everything that you need easily. And so we're very excited about that as it relates to the games or the event. You know, that starts at South Carolina State with the opening ceremony. So we're excited about that, that we'll host that on South Carolina State campus. And then we'll have games at the complex that starts at 10:00 a.m. And so we have entertainment for the community as well as our visitors that come in nightly that will be at the complex. So we're very excited about it. We'll have a kid's own area also for those patrons that come with their families. So if they're not excited about the game, they'll have an area to go play and enjoy the complex. So we're very excited about all the things that is going on. Our sponsorship is going pretty good. We have about 20 sponsors from field sponsors all the way to ad sponsors. And so we're very excited about those opportunities and that we've been able to achieve. And our volunteers, and there's a lot of volunteer opportunity that we have. And so we've continued to recruit. As you go around all the communities and our businesses on North Road, downtown, 601, 301, you'll see marketing material in the drive-thru, the banners are out, the signs are up. And so we're really, really working very, very hard to get the community and our surrounding areas excited about what's coming to Orangeburg, July 25th. And so we're excited about that. Our host teams will be, it will be a county event. So Nissas will represent the Division Two, and Orangeburg will represent Division One. So we're very excited about that. We want the community to know that it's a community event, there's things for everyone, for our visitors and the community to come out and enjoy Orangeburg Recreation Park during this event. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you for your presentation. With the expectation of 30,000 to 50,000 people coming to Orangeburg in July, what effort have we made with lodging, hotel accommodation?
So we have talked with all of the hotels on 601 and in Santee, and we have also reached out to some. We had some conversation with them in Columbia. So the hotels are aware that this event is coming. Everyone is prepared and know. And so the organization also has a travel group that's working that teams and families from other states can get hotels in this area when they come.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sean. We have guestimation, you know, could possibly 50,000, could be 60, you know, we have high expectations. The players themselves and families, is there somewhere in there they'll get a tour of Orangeburg? Because we want to invite them here now, we want to invite them back to live.
And so as it relates to not so much of a tour, but they will get a ton of information in their welcome package and each team welcome package. We highlight major attractions and things that to do while you're in Orangeburg. So all of the teams and parents that were participating in this event will have information about Orangeburg and all our attractions and things that they can do and visit during their idle time that they're not playing.
Thank you.
Not a comment, but I would like to offer all of the Counsel members to, if you need us, call us. We're here to help in whatever situation you need us. Please feel free to do that because I am excited about this many people coming to. Look, the big O is what I call it, Big O of Orangeburg. So we need to be ready, and I am ready to help with whatever situation you need me in.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
One more question, what about the Gateway Project? How far would that go?
Councilman Kalu, thank you for that question. That has already broken ground, that broke ground last week. So they are, we anticipate that that will be substantially complete by July 25th. So that has started.
Great, thank you.
And Mayor, Counsel, if I may, I just want to, again, thank all of our sponsors, thank all of our partners who have stepped forward to assist us with this process. We have an internal committee that has worked very hard. Obviously, Mr. Taylor, Jennifer Van Cleve, Teresa Williams, John Singh, Meredith Garrus, our consultants at Blue Avenue have all done an excellent job and worked very, very hard on this. This project Marty Canard as well. So this is something that we're not taking lightly, that we are certainly putting, trying to put our best foot forward and look forward to hosting, putting forth our best effort, but making sure that we host and represent Orangeburg in the best possible way.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you. I have number, number five, Ms. Everin.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. We had a vacancy on the Building Board of Appeals, the term ending July 1st, 2026. We had solicited, asked that anyone on Counsel put forth a nomination. We had one individual that was nominated by Councilman Strowman, Mr. Brian Duncan, to fill the uninspired vacancy on the Board of Appeals. So his name has been put forth as a nominee for your consideration.
All right. We need to entertain a motion to accept Mr. Brian Duncan.
I move for approval of Mr. Duncan.
Yes. You made, say it again, please, I have.
I move for approval of the name Mr. Brian Duncan.
Okay, motion has been made by Councilman Kalu. Second by Councilman Strowman, all in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, is that yours, Ms. Everin?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
I am here this evening to present to you the first reading of the ordinance to consider a zoning district map change from A1 Residential Single Unit District to OI Office Institutional Residential District for property located 1132 Boulevard Street Northeast, tax map number 0173-05-06-002-000. In your packet was a summary memo from the May Planning Commission meeting and public hearing. There were about 19 members from the public that were present, which included one member of the press. Both of them, all of them, attended the public hearing. At the public hearing, we had approximately seven people to speak. Some of them spoke in support of the ordinance change. Most spoke against the ordinance change. And during the Planning Commission meeting, they did vote unanimously to deny the request. And minutes from the meeting will be coming to you next week.
So explain to the council and the listening audience what they're going to put there.
There was an ambulance service that initially signed a lease for the, with the property owner to put an ambulance service in that area. The area was not zoned for that, so they had to move out or relocate until we could complete this process. So nothing is there currently, but an ambulance service has signed a lease in order to locate in that, that housing area.
And the Planning Commission has denied it?
Denied it, yes, sir.
All right. I just want to understand everybody what's going on here as far as, as relates to what we were voting on. We want to be clear. They want to rezone to put an ambulance service in a neighborhood. Their ambulance run all night long.
Ambulance service.
Yeah, they run all night long, remember that. They run all night long, sirens and all that kind of stuff in a residential area. And it was there before it was zoned to be there. Okay?
Now, let me just ask a question now. Here in the reading here, the commission voted unanimously to deny the request. Then they came back, and the committee voted unanimously to approve the request.
No, no, that was, that was something else.
They denied it all.
They denied it.
They denied it.
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just think about your house, you waking up in the morning, ambulance.
There's a house there currently, correct?
This is, this is a residential area. And the house in question sits right on the road. It's right next to a, what is that? It's a commercial, commercial building.
You know where, you know where Red White was?
Right, right next door to that.
Okay, we need to act on this.
I make a motion to accept the Planning Commission's decision and deny the claim.
Okay.
Second that motion.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman, and motion has been seconded by Councilman Kit, all in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mass detained to DPU, Mr. Hawley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Counsel.
Good evening.
To the public, you have before you a resolution of the City of Orangeburg, State of South Carolina, authorizing Department of Public Utilities manager to apply for a drinking water revolving loan for approximately $11.5 million. For context, we have included in your packet budget information from our budget process last year, and this is our current budget. But if you recall, during the budget process, DPU staff presented project number five on that list of about eight or 10 projects, project number five, which is we proposed to make some improvements to our water treatment. to make some improvements to our water treatment plant and to our alum sludge lagoon. Projected cost was twelve point one million dollars total. As the project moves along, we also reminded you that in order for us to accomplish this, we would be coming back to you to borrow money through the SRF Fund, the State Revolving Loan Fund. We have used that, those sources, that's the source of money before at our water treatment plants where we borrowed approximately twenty-seven million dollars to do that project. And so, we're asking that council allow us to move forward as outlined in the budget to borrow from this, the State Revolving Loan Fund to be able to do this project. I got, I have Mr. Eric Odom here. If you want specifics, technical explanation on some of the project, he can give you that. But just in brief, again, it will allow us to be able to make improvements to our water treatment plant along with alum sludge lagoon, which gives us more capacity. It would expand the life of that lagoon fifty years maybe? A, a, a long time beyond our existence. And so, say again? Speak more. So, we, we would urge you to allow us to continue to move forward as planned. As you know, we plan our projects in five-year increments when we consider our capital budget process. And so, as we look at our capital improvement plan, we look at it in those five-year chunks, and this is a part of that process. As we knock things out of the water, we, we move on to the next, so.
I, I have, I have some questions. Um, I, I'd like to educate the public, you know, when we talk about borrowing money, and I'd just like to talk about what a benefit of this improvement, what would be, is there any particular area you are targeting or just, it's just overall?
So, it's overall, it's, it's the plant, and, and we'll make improvements in the plant, but also, it would also allow us, and I'll let Eric speak more to this, to do some improvements on the, on the wastewater side. Hope I'm not out of line saying that, but that'll make some improvements to assist with that as well. We've had some issues. And so, it will just, not just cover wastewater treatment plant and the lagoon that we have. And many of you may not even know where that is, but it's a quiet little place that nobody wants to talk about, but we, 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 it's very necessary for our operations. Eric, can you explain some more of the benefits?
Yes, yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. The, the project itself is a complete overhaul of our water treatment plant residuals handling process. Without going into overall detail, we've got multiple ways that we have the ability to get rid of solids that are created through our treatment process. We take water out of the river, we treat that water, we, it looks like tea a lot of times when we pull it out of the river, but when we pump it out the system, it's clear, and there's a lot of residuals and solids that we remove from that. We have to do something with those, so we have to dispose of them. We have the ability to send them to our wastewater treatment plant or to our alum sludge lagoon. The project itself is actually a little bit of open-heart surgery in our plant because it is a very complicated facility, and it's got a lot of pipes, wires, a lot of stuff buried. And so, we're adding new washwater pump station that helps wash filters after we've been treating water. We've got to backwash those filters. We got to do something with that water when we backwash it. So, we're splitting waste streams, we're adding additional chemical feed storage. Overall, this project will really, really improve the ability for us to operate that plant long-term, washing filters on a more frequent basis than what we currently have the ability to do. During the big freeze, we started running around eighteen, nineteen million gallons a day through our plant. We needed to wash filters a lot quicker than what we currently do at our eight million gallon per day rate. So, for going forward, you know, as development increases, we start selling more water, we're gonna need that additional capacity to be able to handle these solids. So, in addition, we're making some improvements to a wastewater line that we discharge to that is a critical line for Orangeburg. So, a lot of capacity goes through it.
That's great. Any questions?
How long or how many years is this loan, and at what percent?
Twenty years, two point one.
Yeah. Two point twenty percent.
I thought we just remodeled this plant, just rebuilt it a few years ago.
So, so the last plant was an, or the last upgrade, so to speak, was a plant expansion where we added ten million gallons of capacity to our treatment plant. We have not touched the residuals portion in over twenty-five years. We added treatment capacity, but not the ability to improve the way we get rid of our solids would be the easy way to explain that. We still can treat thirty million gallons a day. That's not a problem, but the faster you run that plant, the more frequently you have to backwash filters. More frequently, you have to get rid of the backwash water, wastewater, all of that, so.
You doing thirty million gallons a day right now?
We're not. But like I said, this project will.
How many do you do in that?
About eight.
In order to go to thirty?
No, sir. So, we, we have the ability to treat thirty now. As more demand comes online from development, we'll creep towards that thirty million gallons per day, but not treat thirty million anytime soon, I would think.
I would add that this is about as cheap as you're gonna find money these days, and, and, you know, at some point, this has to be done. Even if we didn't do it now, it's gonna have to be done. With the growth, potential growth that we see, we're seeing headed our way, it would put us, as Eric mentioned, when we doing the ice storm, when we saw eighteen million gallons of water running through that plant a day, if you get to that point, it could complicate things more than, than necessary. So, just keep that in mind.
And I want to say this to the council, if, if I could, please. They, they have always been operating in, in an advanced state, keep us from breaking down. And since they, since they've been there, they worked on those substations, and we had, and we have outages, we able to get back on. We, we want to stay efficient and as efficient and as ahead of things as we can, because once the water go bad, then whatever go bad, you know our phones are gonna be ringing. You know our phones are gonna be ringing, people gonna be calling and calling and calling and calling. So, I think that we should, I think we should stand behind them when they trying to be efficient and effective to our customers, because customers come first.
To your point, Mr. Mayor, of course, we, we, this is a part of our strategic plan to identify and improve our infrastructure needs. And so, each division went in and identified areas in that capital improvement plan they needed to work on in, in those five-year chunks. And, and this is one of those. And on top of that, you, you hit it right on the head. In, in the utility business, you try to stay ahead of that stuff, because if you get behind it, it costs more, and it costs more issues to be behind. So, we're not always ahead, but, but we try to do our best to stay ahead.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we anticipate any additional financial burden on our citizens as a result of taking on this, this loan?
So, um, if, well, you weren't a part of that. In, in our budget process, we put together a projected plan of not only borrowing, but also each year, we come back with where we think we need to be in terms of rate increases. At this point, I, I continuously remind council that our water and our wastewater, whether we do this project or not, needs to have a rate increase because we are not covering the cost of the system. And so, I say that loudly because at some point, we have to make sure that we can cover the cost. And so, we do have projected going forward, some rate increases in the water and wastewater division, but not necessarily because of this project, but.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the question go to the department, the water, water department. I was, I was, I visited a few months ago. I had a great visit. I had someone who took me on a tour, and I know they're glad to see me go. I was asking questions, they were spitting out answers, disputing out answers. Some things I understood and some things I did not. But most things I did because when they get that technical, this is the hydraulic, this is the, I did not know. But I asked them, the equipment you have now, looking same thing we said, how do we look going in the future? Equipment you have now, when was the last time it was, what'd you call it? Not renovated, but updated? And they gave me those answers. Now, some of those, some of the equipment out there has been upgraded, but they upgraded equipment, I think, old as I am. And you're thinking about that, you're thinking about what you can't keep upgrading, whether it's one time or two time. But when they told me the cost of some of that equipment, they said, man, that's, that's cheap. But as we look at this, and if you get a chance to go out and see the problems, you have to get clearance to get in there. I started to call the president to get me in, and I knew it was locked down like that. They say, yeah, it's locked down. It is locked down. I had to get clearance. And I went in and they got a thorough visit, and they took me through every nook and cranny that, and I asked them every little question I could ask. But the most important question was, how will we look if we stay like we are? And the question was, we'll, we'll look good, but? And then, you talking about that but? Well, it's easy to do it now, before it happened, then wait and let it happen, and then they said, all seven of us crazy, they know they could have did something. So, let's, let's look out for the welfare of our citizens and the ones to come. And then, Mr. Harley, I'm gonna be here another fifty years, I'm sorry.
Looking forward to it.
One, I have one, I have one question. If somebody, I have one question. Now, I know we can't, I'm just one person up here, but if you all can sustain this loan if we do not pass the rate increase?
Say, I'm sorry.
Can y'all sustain this loan? If you come to us during the budget and say, we can, can y'all? I'm just asking. Now, sustain this loan if the rate increase is not passed?
So, so, the, the rate increase.
For, for wastewater, or water, whatever increase y'all gonna ask for, say if y'all ask for?
Yeah, I, I, I believe we can make that work. However, I may make a different decision. If, if you tell me I, I can't borrow the money, I'll have to.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about, I'm talking about if the rate increase, if you come and ask for a rate increase for wastewater or for, you know.
Right.
If it's denied, can you still?
Can we do this project?
Yes.
Yes, we could do the project.
Okay. I just, I just want to know that because, you know, for what we vote, I want to know my options, you know, can you still?
I got you. I understand your question.
Would this hurt? I don't want it to hurt. I don't want to vote in it to hurt. We can't maintain this.
But, but even if we didn't do this project, let me, let me remind you, and, and we, we're getting ahead of ourselves on, on some of this, but we're likely to ask, and I told you guys that last budget process, we're like to ask for another rate increase because we projected, if you recall in the budget discussion, we projected the rate increase to be split over a three-year period alternating. And we did that because council didn't want to raise the rate all at once. And so, we projected to spread that out over time. Of course, council can change its mind and decide not to do that, and we'll make adjustments in the process. So, I, I just want to, just so we can have the conversation and make sure we understand.
That answer my question.
Right.
Okay. Any, any, any more questions or concerns? Okay.
Something I don't quite understand what you're saying. You said something about you, you said, there's too many gallons now, right?
Yes.
Eight million gallons a day running through the plant now.
Is that right?
So, can I change the way I kind of worded that and explain it? So, the process at the plant that we are trying to upgrade, which is our water treatment plant residuals, which is all of the waste from the treatment process and, and washing filters and keeping filters in order to be able to treat water, is what we're looking at upgrading. The washwater pumps we're upgrading were installed in nineteen eighty-one. The water tank that serves those pumps was put in in nineteen thirty-seven. A lot of the lines through the plant are some of the, still the originals, and, and we have increased the capacity, the treatment capacity of the plant by twenty million gallons a day without upgrading the ability to assist in the residuals handling process. It's kind of, one's making clean water go out the front, and the other one's making dirty water go out the back is the easiest way to describe it, I guess, but. So, while we've added twenty million gallons of capacity to our plant over the, since nineteen ninety-one, we've not done any upgrades to the ability to get rid of the waste the process actually creates.
Talking about what happens if you do have the number, the amount of growth that could potentially happen.
The, the, one of the biggest issues is we've got a three-inch discharge line for all the residuals leaving the plant, three inches. And so, we're, we're heavily restricted on that end. This will give us the ability to split waste streams and increase the ability to wash filters going forward. So, as our demands increase, where we can leverage the thirty million gallon capacity, you know, going from eight to ten to twelve to fourteen, we have a much more efficient process to be able to backwash filters and get filters back online so they can be treated.
But you're able to sell more water.
Correct. Yes, sir.
But you sell more water, you'll make more money.
I hope.
Sell more money.
That would be the hope.
It looks like if you sell more water, you're not asked for a rate increase, since you're making a profit now.
That's the hard part. Creating.
Let me just say that even though we're looking at the amount here, but if we do not take care of it now, just say in the next how many years, it will cost us probably double of what we are looking at now. So, we'd rather do it now than wait and have to double the amount.
It will go up. It, it, nothing gets cheaper. It will go up. I don't know that it'll double, but it will go up. As we've seen, the, the, the process of kicking things down the road, again, you get behind it, we lose control from a financial standpoint, and we lose control from a, a management and operation standpoint. It makes their job harder in the plant to, to, to make sure that we can maintain the system if things get too old, too out of date and, and break down more often than not. But again, we have some very talented folks. Eric and his staff are, are some of the best in the state. We will do what you guys tell us to do, and we will operate with what you provide for us.
We have the best water in the state, so let's keep it.
We do. We, we actually do blind taste test.
You do?
I guess we don't have a choice.
Yes, we do. Okay, if there are no, no more concerns, if anybody have any more concerns before I read the resolution. A resolution of the City of Orangeburg, State of South Carolina authorizing the Department of Public Utilities Manager to apply for a drinking water revolving loan for approximately eleven million five hundred thousand dollars.
Mayor and Council, I move for the adoption of the, authorizing the Department of Public Utilities to apply for a drinking water revolving loan.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit. Second by Councilman Hannah. All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council.
Thank you. We are going into executive session. We are, item number eight, discussion and negotiation incident to propose contractual arrangement, propose sale or purchase of property to receipt of legal advice, or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, project young, SC code S C E thirty-four seventy-eight two. Project Young SC Code SCE 3470A2. Item number nine, discussion of personnel policies, including personnel handbook, receipt of legal advice, and other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. South Carolina Code 30-4-70A12. Item number 10, the performance evaluation discussion proposed by contractual arrangement. City of Orangeburg, Department of Public Utility Manager, South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70-8-1. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman. Second by Councilman Grievous. All in favor? We won't be coming back. Good night and thank all of you for being here.